City of Rockaway Beach City Council Workshop on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four at four thirty P M will come to order. Let's record who's in attendance, Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Council Franken.
Here.
Councilor Hayes.
Yeah.
Councilor Martine.
Yes.
Councilor McGinnis.
Yes.
And Mayor McNeely is present. Workshops are intended to allow for preliminary discussions by the city council and staff. Workshops are held to present information to the council so that the council is prepared for upcoming regular meetings. Workshops are subject to Oregon's public meeting law and must be noticed accordingly. No final city council decisions are made during workshops. The public is encouraged to attend workshops but may not participate unless expressed a asked. So let's begin our discussion with a discussion regarding city council election process. Senator Shepard.
Yes, so the council had an interest in looking at the city's election process for mayor and council members. And so we've been looking into that. We invited Christie, Christie Biggs, the Tillamook County Clerk. And she handles all the elections and ballot measures for Tillamook County. She's kind of the expert here in the county. And then secondly, in investigating the election process here, we saw in our charter that we're required to have an ordinance to prescribe how we nominate candidates. And so the second item here is basically the, I don't want to go into more detail, the, the shortest, quickest possible ordinance that basically codifies, codifies our current process for nominating candidates. So we should be able to close that, close that loop with that ordinance. But with that, I'd like to invite Christie Biggs up where we'd like to sit and, and kind of talk about the mechanics of elections and why we have, why sometimes it's a good idea to have positions.
Yeah, so historically, prior to two thousand and fourteen, your council did not have position numbers. And I can't speak to what happened under the prior clerk, but I can just say, like, there was, position numbers were added in two thousand and fourteen. And I, I was working in the office at that time. And so I do remember that the conversation was around having position numbers so that it was easier to track with the amount of recalls that were happening during those years. Easier to track when somebody vacated a position and being able to know who took that position. And then when the next election came that we were getting people in for the right terms. And I know that's how that had come about. And that was just, I know on our end it was an ease of tracking in our system for what candidates were in which council position seats. So that's how that had started.
So in, in our charter, it's Christie, it says that the city council's in charge of, in accordance with state law, is in charge of the manner of, of their elections. And I didn't word that exactly correctly. But does that mean that in two thousand and fourteen, the city council requested the positions? Or what does that mean?
I cannot find anything in the files in our office that would indicate that there was communication from the city directing or asking us to make that change in our records. So what, if there was something that was put forward and given to a prior clerk to make that change, I can't speak to that. But so I don't, I know there was communication with the city, but I do not know in which manner that happened. And not to be vague, I just honestly don't know because I can't find anything to show up.
I was first on L nine and we had numbers on.
In O nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, everyone keeps saying two thousand and fourteen, but I.
It was two thousand and fourteen.
It was, yeah.
It was two and four year.
I'm sorry.
And they alternated and that, and if you look at the model charter, all of the small cities and so like, so historically, all the small cities in Tillamook County were the two and four years. And they were, and it was set up so that no more than three seats vacated at one time, which is one of my worries about them having added the numbers. Joel Sacks was the attorney for the city of Rockaway Beach and we had all the recall stuff happen. And when we did research, they added numbers to Nahalem and to Rockaway. But no one could find a legal resolution or any paperwork where we requested for that to happen. And I believe it has to be a vote of the council and requested with an open public hearing. And so just like some of the other stuff that happened at that time, we had a charter change too in a public meeting that nobody really knew about. And that removed our city recorder from our charter at that time. Like just a bunch of hokey stuff happened. And in my opinion, that was one of those things that has undermined the foundation of, of our city in ways. And I kind of, I'm watching us all kind of put those things back together. We have five seats open in the next election. And for staff, that's, you know, that, I'm sure that can be very cumbersome or very hard, especially if, if those five seats got filled by people who are completely conflicting opinions or had no background in city and municipal government in any way.
Well, Christine, state law says that councillors are, and cities in Oregon are elected for four-year terms. And if we only have some two-year terms, is that something we would need to change or how, how does that work?
Well, typically, I think you are the only city in Tillamook County that does not have unexpired terms. So if you had just been newly elected and left, vacated your position and the council appointed someone to fill it, typically what would happen is that the next general election, somebody would run to be on the ballot for a two-year unexpired term to complete the term that you had vacated. And so that's typically how that happens. But the city of Rockaway is different because your charter says that whoever you appoint fills the remainder of that term. So there, there are no unexpired terms for your council positions.
So that would mean we don't have to run this time, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's news to me. It's good news.
Well, I, Luke brought that to my attention. I, when we were talking, I didn't see that either until when I read the charter too. It's like to fill the unexpired term is what the language says, correct? I mean.
Um, no, there's a, there's a timeline in there. If it's more than ninety days, I think before the end of the term, you have to, you have to run again.
Okay.
Yeah, it does have that ninety day.
And to change that, we have to do it or, or amend it to our charter.
It'd have to be on the ballot.
Yeah.
If it was less than ninety days, that's what it.
Like if, if you were appointed thirty days before the term was up, then you would.
Yeah, I don't know the exact time.
That doesn't even make sense.
But you were appointed early enough that, that you'll have to, you'll have to rerun.
If you want to.
I want to ask Tassi and I, and I didn't, going back to the, the numbers on the seats, I asked her if she could tell me and, and I haven't asked you. Or I did, we did talk about it. We did talk about it. Tassi told me it, it made it much easier in her office to be able to track things, but she could not give me any reason why it would be advantageous to us or to the citizens of Rockaway Beach. And, and because like Tillamook, it makes sense. They have districts. And I could see if we had districts, like if we had a representative from Nadana and one from Twin Rocks or different areas of Rockaway, or if we were a larger city that had different infrastructure leaves and things that would make sense. But I cannot, with the exception of your position and it making it easier for your office, I could not find any reason why that was done except for political stuff. And, and having been a council person that was targeted when I ran, I think it sets us up for more of that stuff happening.
Christie, and I agree with Christine on this, but what do we, what would we as a council need to do to make sure our election process is in alignment with state law, first of all? And secondly, run smoothly and legitimately. What, what would we need to do to go forward with that?
Yeah, talk to your, like, get legal advice from your legal counsel and ask how you should do that. And I can't give you advice on that, but I mean, my office is here to do whatever it is that you would like because you are the decision makers for your, for your city. And so whatever I'm directed to do, whether it's through an ordinance or resolution, we will do. And so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If there's, if there's some doubt, we'd be happy to check into that with our attorney and it's not, it's not an issue.
Will you look and see if there was any resolution or anything that you can find where it was actually legally changed or they were added? Because I've not, nobody's been able to find that for me anymore. And I've looked, I went to Tassi, she told me there was nothing there. I asked Christie.
I looked in the files today.
Yeah, but there's nothing there. I went through the agendas and all the minutes. We had a, a citizen, Brian Halverson, who did a petition. And he had more than enough signatures in less than three weeks of the people in Rockaway Beach. Who, and he was, wanted to put it on the ballot. And the city manager at that time would not accept his, his petition. And she simply, he was to the point where he had to hire an attorney and go to this state. And so was over it. And instead he backed off and then he resigned as a financial machine. Because he, he told me personally, it was just too much for him. He couldn't do it. And he was a young man in his early twenties. I believe he had the best intention. He actually ran against Tim Josie for, and won over, was it Tim Josie? Who was it? Tell me. Do you remember?
He ran as an independent, so yeah, no, Brian didn't win.
No, but he ran over, he had more votes than some folks who put way more money into their campaigns. I was very shocked. And I, I think he had the best intentions. And I also believe that that's what the citizens wanted, you know? I, I have a question about the two and the four-year part. And so when we, and maybe it's for Luke, when we have, the five positions are open again on the ballot, then some of, how many are two-year and how many are four-year? Do you know that?
They're all four-year unless you're filling, if you're appointed, then it'll be a two-year, you get it back.
Yeah, I think that's what she was saying, like, like it could be two years for the next election.
So before the numbers were added to the seats, there were two, two years and three, four years. Or there was a certain amount of each of those years and it was.
Actually, there was one year where there was only one council position that, that was allowed, that was voted on. And Terry Walhood ran unopposed.
Well, so I think that's because of the recalls, like I think.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just saying that there was, yeah.
Began to undermine what was set up from a model charter. And, and I went to a model charter and looked at how our, or, or the suggested model charter for Oregon is how, how I kind of made my comparisons and then looked how we, how we changed our charter from those. So.
But, but one thing I want to correct, when, when you said that the recorder was just taken off, actually it was put on the ballot and the citizens voted on it. I, I found, I found the S E L filing to put it on the ballot. So I just want to correct that for all the people who are listening.
About the public hearing that happened at seven thirty in the morning here at City Hall was, I do, I don't believe the citizens knew about that.
But it was on the ballot and they both done it. That's correct.
That's right.
Well, it's a good thing. We all want to do it right.
Yes.
I think that's really the important thing. Everybody at this table is all about doing it right, following the charter, following the ordinances. And yes, there is a lot of ugly history looking backwards. I heard an interesting quote earlier today. I don't know if you all know Jelly Roll, the, the country western singer who was in prison really. But he said, there's a reason that the front window is bigger than the back window because that's where you should be paying attention, going forward, not looking backwards. So I would encourage all of us to look forward and, and do the right thing as we all want to do.
Yeah, so, so what I get, Luke, is that, and make the mayor's right, all of us are really wanting to make sure that we're legally doing what we're supposed to do with our elections. And I think we would probably like for you to talk to the city attorney and to see if what we have in process right now is the best legal way we can do it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, that, that can be done.
We have five, just a little time check, five minutes in this slot.
Oh, there was one other thing too, wasn't there?
Yeah, we have, we have a draft ordinance to take a look at too. So like, are we done with that topic? Okay. So yeah, number two, like we said, the charter was pretty clear. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
This is the council must adopt an ordinance prescribing the manner for a person to be nominated to run for mayor for city council position. And so what that means is either nominated by petition, nominated by petition, which all of you who collected your ten to eleven signatures, that's filed by petition. And that's our current process. And so this is codified that. The other option is filing by fee. So instead of signatures, candidates can pay a fee. So it's really up to the council. You can do either one, you can do both. Right now we do by petition and the draft ordinance kind of follows our current practices.
And, and so for people who are listening, they may not know, the signatures that we gather is very, very small. I'm thinking, if I remember from last year, I had to gather like fourteen or something.
It is somewhere in there.
It's, it's not taxing, you know?
Yeah.
And, and what it does is it, it, I think the reason that we have the signatures on there is the people who may not have the money for the filing fee or whatever, they can gather signatures instead and, and everybody can still run.
I, I like this gathering signatures on the position because it, it begins to connect the individual with the community. And.
I think that's very important. You get out there and do your due diligence to take a position like this.
I'm okay with doing it both ways. It, I myself, because I think it's going to be up to the people when they vote either way. Unless it causes more paperwork for staff that I don't know about in some way or cost us more money in some way that I don't know.
Well, the ordinance as written now replicates what we currently do. I'm, I'm happy that we stayed of course. I don't think we need to add in the fee approach to the mix.
Okay, so, so, so Mayor sounds like you, you're okay with.
I like the ordinance as written. Yes.
Again, if you're okay with how it's written. Well, that's the truth.
Yes.
Is you're okay with both?
Look, have you, I remember Keith Pantral, like right before it was time for him to turn his stuff in, he did not understand the process. Have you found that to be true for very many people?
If they don't reach out to us or reach out to the county, it can be a difficult process.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, we make it, we're pretty clear on our website, you know, here's the steps. File the S E L one oh one or one twenty-one where they are. Get your signatures, come into City Hall and then you go to the county. We, we lay it out pretty, pretty, pretty simple for people and we're here to answer questions.
Yeah, and the rest of it is, is not part of the city. The rest of it's the state. The complicated part is the state. I'll just put it that way.
It was the signature print he didn't understand. And I think he just made it. And actually, there were two dates that were printed. One was, I don't remember, do you remember? One was from the county and was for the city, maybe.
Yeah, he had a date that, a suggested date, you know, we, we'd like to get it here. So we, we know we have time to, to, to get things processed. But the county says fee date.
Okay.
Or I don't know who says it, but.
We do, yeah. We have to signature verify.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so they've got the hard deadline. There are, there are ways for the council to set a, a, a different deadline, but I don't know that we need to get into that.
No, I just didn't want that to happen again, what happened with him, because he barely made the window. And I think maybe I barely made the window because there were two dates.
Yeah.
And so.
As a newbie to the whole process, I can tell you that City Manager Shepard was very accommodating. Answered all my questions. It was, it was a very straightforward, easy process. And I got all the support I needed to make it happen, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just was.
That's what we're here for, discussion. Council Franken, what's your thoughts on the, the proposal ordinance?
I think it's, it's fine how it's written, but we're not technically voting, right?
No, I'm just, you know, if, if there was a consensus one way or another, we'd, we'd redraft it, yeah.
I think it's a great opportunity to engage.
Yeah.
If one wants to run.
Okay. All right. Of my time?
I have no strong feelings either way.
Okay. Very nice.
All right. Are we ready to move on to the next agenda item? All right, discussion regarding elected official stipend, ten minutes.
Okay, so before we begin, I just want to make sure everybody knows, so we will be discussing possibly increasing the financial compensation for the mayor and, and council members here. So that does present a potential conflict of interest for all of you. But I just want to say.
Maybe you can never be voted on.
Yeah. Well, we're done. Now, now, if we, if we follow along the line that, that whatever, whatever we decide at, at a regular session, that it takes effect after the next election. So after January, then, then it is a potential conflict. And we all can state that's a potential conflict and you can discuss it and you can go on.
Could I mention something about that real quickly before we move on?
Yes.
At, at Kenny's request, and I'm so thankful that you encouraged me to do this at the fall, the fall, or the annual League of Oregon Cities Workshop, she requested that I go to the one on compensation for elected officials. And it was so enlightening. And one of the big takeaways was that the city council should never just decide themselves whether to raise their own compensation, but they should have a citizens committee study it and make a recommendation. And then it lessens that conflict of interest because we're voting on what the citizens recommended rather than just coming up with it ourselves. And I, so I just want to say that was one of the big takeaways from the L O C workshop.
And I'll just pile on, I like that approach that we put together, a small advisory group. A normal process, they apply, they get appointed, we nominate, we get appointed and they, we're charged to go out and take a look at elected official compensation and come back with a recommendation to be aware of them. And it's fine the way it is to, to some, some, some changes.
I'd like to see a survey for the citizens.
Well, that this committee could do that possibly. They could put a survey up.
Otherwise, I, I wouldn't support that.
I just brought this up because, say for instance, the fire chiefs stipend. Now, all these years, Bearman Manor got a hundred fifty dollars a month. And they just found out last week that Jay Maroo, who's been the fire chief down in Garrett Valley, was getting seven grand a month. And so he says, you know, we need to find an eagle step somewhere to sit. Because if we're getting fifty bucks a month and the other councillors are getting five hundred, we don't know.
Yeah.
Let me make it clear, I'm not, I'm not interested. I'm not asking for a raise. I'm, I'm comfortable where I'm at.
But it wouldn't affect us unless we were reelected.
That's true.
So I think we would be the best people to put forward this right now because then the other, there's going to be five, five of us being reelected. So we wouldn't have a conflict of interest. Correct?
There's, there's certainly a potential.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if you are reelected, there's a potential to be reelected and, and when you would, you would, you would see the benefit of, of your vote.
Sure.
That's, and that's, that's the opinion of the Ethics Commission. So I, I really want to back up and say, I, I do recommend you all state a conflict before we continue talking about this. And so.
There is a potential conflict of interest for me.
So, and so I'd say, you know, if I was you, I would say I declare a potential conflict of interest.
Oh, you mean right now?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant when we were ready to vote.
No, no, since this topic has the potential to benefit the financial, you know, something along those lines.
There, I'll say it.
It's, it's my recommendation that we, we do that.
There, there's a potential conflict of interest for, for me and, and to, yeah, I'll just say it and we will win.
Is it true for me if I'm not taking one?
Yes.
There's the potential you could take it. It's up to you. I don't, I don't get to determine whether you're a conflict of interest. I, I only can recommend.
There's a potential conflict of interest due to financial impact in this discussion.
And I believe there's a conflict.
So even having a potential conflict of interest is to be stated.
And by, by making sure whatever happened takes effect after the next election, it becomes potential. Yeah.
For me.
And then, and if it's potential, it's fine. You all can, can discuss it, go on with it. Just needs to be declared.
What about that suggestion though? I mean, that Mary was talking about, to have the, a committee.
That was definitely the League of Oregon Cities recommendation was that a citizens committee recommend, if we should even have a stipend.
They can consume the same information and even go beyond that.
And they could also look at ways of increasing it because at that, at that workshop, I learned that some city, cities pay like health insurance and things like that for the city councillors instead of increasing. And I'm looking on here and I don't see the numbers, but some of the cities in that meeting, you know, that, the, like, the mayor of Salem was getting two thousand three hundred a month.
Hills, hills, there are.
For me, I, I think when by adding, by making it be about money, then it loses the feel volunteering, doing, doing the job for the community. It becomes a job. And that's why people are paid to be a fire chief city manager. So I think Jay actually was in a position where he was also their part-time city manager if he was making that much. I can't imagine a fire chief being.
That was before he was, because I knew the guy because he was contracting, you know, I worked with him.
I have worries about our positions and folks' pet projects being funded because we're sitting here or boundaries being skewed sometimes. And so I think it's part of the reason I don't take a stipend in any way. What I do really is about community service.
So I'm not disagreeing with that, but I agree that it eliminates people that are of a different generation, different age, that can't afford to even consider running, that maybe would be a really good balance because it's not financially viable. And so that's the only concern I have.
I understand pet projects and stipends.
I wish, I wish we had.
God, I just don't know.
Yeah. Councilor, I don't understand your comment about pet projects and stipends and how those are somehow connected when we have a council here that makes the decisions.
I guess. Think I want to go down a rabbit hole about that. Talk more about what Alicia and Mary were talking about. I wish we had a younger population that was interested in working with us. And, and I know a lot of young people here and I, I don't think that more money would help.
Yes.
I think if we had a larger population, that would really, really be true. I think if we are better working together as, as we have been doing in the last year, I think the healthier we are, the more attractive we are to the young people to join us. I think the more recall stuff, numbers on the seats, hokey stuff, I think the, the less attractive we are to those young people. And that's what they tell me. I had a young person in their twenties today tell me, I said, one of the officials said that the public can't be trusted to choose the, like, we were debating if there should be numbers on the seats or not. And she said, you know, if you can't trust the voters to make the best choice, then what is democracy all about? You know? Because I don't, and I, I guess I'm having a hard time communicating.
We're into one minute and saying.
You're the shit, and so I need to.
Like I just said, one, one, one thing real quick, I just want to make sure you all were at the timelines involved. If we do want to make any changes. To this compensation, we have to allocate those changes in next year's budget, so um, there's a, there's a timeline to get. Uh, uh, at least uh, a ballpark, uh, exactly should be great, so we get it in budget process.
And, and like, would that have to be done by April or May or March or?
March would be great.
So how quickly could we get an advisory committee together and it would, they would probably. Function for like thirty days or one month or something, you know, I mean, it would be a really quick. Temporary ad hoc advisory committee that would look at what other cities are doing. And, and, and make a recommendation to us, could we do that by March?
Well, we'd have a resolution in February, it would, it would be by resolution.
Yeah.
To form the committee.
You've got to form the committee.
We take applications for a couple of weeks and whatever, and in March, we could uh, uh, the March meeting, we could. Um, I could nominate and the council could appoint. Um, members.
So they, then, in that, in that case, they would have to have so quick meetings.
So what's the rush, the, right, so couldn't it, it could be taken a, a little bit. More. Less rushed pace and then be the year thereafter, I mean.
Sure.
Sure, that can happen.
None of us are sitting here, I don't believe. Clamoring for that, it came up as a discussion point and.
I, I, I liked it, I would like to be very thorough with it and, and make sure it's what the community wants.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
And then it doesn't have to rush the, for the next budget round.
Yeah, I, I would, I would prefer uh, that we all try to uh, rush and, and throw a committee together. Um, also, we, we have a lot going on right at this moment, um, and, and. I'm just learning about the, the potential new committee, so be great to, to have that, at a, at a time we can plan ahead for.
Agreed.
That's, that's a great idea, uh, maybe we can work on it behind the scenes for, for a bit and, and bring it back to you all.
Well, okay.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, next item, uh, review draft resolution setting short-term rental cap and establishing fees for short-term waiting. Uh, STR waiting was requirements for about twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, it's plenty of time and, and. So. I definitely wanna hear from you all on this one, our uh. City planner put together. Uh, uh, fairly, fairly lengthy presentation on for this. And we handed it out, um, kind of as a, a reference guide to you all. I'm gonna go through a few of the slides tonight. Um, and uh, but this is something you all can, can take home and look at, and, and most importantly, if there's any information. You don't see, let me know and we'll, we'll pull it together. What's really nice about separating. Uh, the, the determining termination of what the cap's going to be from the authority to set the cap, uh. Is that uh, we have time to work on what that cap's gonna be, resolutions are a quick process, um, we could do it in February. Pass that resolution in February, we could pass that ru- ru- resolution in March if we want to, and still make the effective date of, of the ordinance, so we have time. Uh, to make sure you all have all the information you need to make a, make a good decision on what that cap.
It is now time that if we have a conflict of interest on this, we need to declare.
Yes.
I have potential conflict of interest, so I will be decisive.
But I have a question, so the um, the public hearings then that allow citizen input on the topic. Um, why is before we decide on the. The, the actual number?
Yeah, uh, so, and so we'll have the, yeah, we'll have two public hearings on, on the, the ordinance that, that sets the authority, that's right.
Because we have a number that we're throwing about and not, I don't mean that like willy-nilly, but it's, it's, you know, it's a. It's a number and.
Yeah.
I, I got a little unsure of whether that meant. That's what we're leading with and then people can tell us how they feel about it and there's a potential that number could change. Based on the input we get, like that.
Absolutely. And, and yeah, so there, there is a number, it's four fifty.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that's in there for, for two reasons, uh, one, that's the only number that came up at our last uh, workshop. I believe it was the mayor, he called out a number.
We have a.
Yeah.
Our, our current level is four fifty-one, so right off the bat, that concerns me.
Yeah, so we, and so, uh, uh, since, since we drafted that, or that number was called out, yeah, we've gone up by one and, and we'll see here in a few minutes. I think we're up to four fifty-five now, uh, with a few. The applications submitted. Um, but it, it's a good starting point, you know, uh, it's, it's. Uh, and I don't think it's really the number four fifty, it's really a placeholder for where we're at right now in my mind and, and. You might, you might feel different, maybe it is four fifty, uh, um, for you, but in my mind, it was. Uh, the placeholder, it's, it's, it's not where we all live now.
Because we're already, we've seen some correspondence of concern.
What percentage of that is of uh. To the residents?
So I'll just go through a few, a few slides here, um, so there's a two thousand one hundred and four improved residential properties in Rockaway Beach. Um, this doesn't count the commercial use properties, so, um. So two thousand one hundred uh, residential properties in Rockaway Beach already developed. And out of those residential properties, twenty-one point six percent. Are short-term rentals or operated short-term rentals or, uh, are part-time short, short-term rentals. Um, and so as, as a, uh, this morning, we were at four fifty-five. And uh, we have, looks like right now eight uh, applications under review by, by staff. Um, so uh, climbing, but not a, not a huge, huge uh, inrush of, of applications. Um, so far. And this is an interesting um, statistic. Six point two percent of STR owners. Are full-time residents in Rockaway Beach. So, interesting. Yeah, uh, most do live in Oregon and most, the vast majority own just a single short-term rental.
So the, the twenty-nine plus the thirty percent live outside of Oregon. If you do the math.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Um, we looked at who, who manages short-term rentals, uh, about forty percent are owner, owner, owner managed. Uh, Vicosa has another huge share too, at, at thirty-four percent. And then what's, what's interesting is. Uh, uh. Number of hotel rooms in Rockaway Beach makes up almost a quarter of the hotel rooms in Toma County. So it's, uh, there are a lot of, uh.
And that's, there, there's a couple that are small, little ones that are not on your list.
Yeah, yeah. So pretty interesting, um, it's not just STRs, we also have a lot of hotels here in town. Uh, hotels do pay short-term rental uh, taxes, but they aren't short-term rental licensed.
So what's the Rockaway getaway, is that short-term, Vicosa?
So anyway, and uh, um, it'll be worth going through the first part of this presentation if it talks about. What other cities are doing with their short-term rentals, how they're, how they're capping them, whether they're through density, different density type regulations. Um, uh, or not, but, but you know, one thing that, that stood out to me when I looked at this, uh, was. Uh, you know, Rockaway was kind of the, uh, an, an early adopter of short-term rentals, we've had them since at least the eighties. Um, and, and so the industry grew for, you know, forty years unchecked, uh, fairly unregulated. And so, you know, I don't know what better way to say, but the cat's out of the bag at this point, last year, we introduced some regulations. Uh, but it's a huge industry, it's already present in Rockaway Beach, and so some of the other cities, uh, who regulated. Their industry early on, uh, were able to shape that industry.
Yeah.
Um, or, or they're, they're, they're taking measures now, but the industry hasn't, hasn't grown, it hasn't, doesn't, so, isn't like what we have here. Uh, so in looking at, at, at places where. Uh, it's already an established industry, what, what did they do, the closest we could find in this, in our area was what Toma County did. When they're looking at their unincorporated areas, um. And, and basically, uh, after a year or more of, of, of discussions and, 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 and public meetings and, and. Uh, they said, uh, their plan was, uh, what's the percentage now? Let's add one percent and, and, uh, cap it there. So for most places, uh, like in Rockaway Beach, I think it said they were, uh. Uh, in our area, there's seventeen percent of, of the homes were short-term rentals, so they said, let's make it eighteen percent and set the cap there.
Um, yeah, you know, um, there have been a few lawsuits about caps and, um. And the only lawsuit that lost was actually in Lincoln County. And it lost on, on a technicality, because they tried to take away short-term rentals and they tried to reduce the number. And the, the lawsuits that were, did not prevail were the ones where they allowed all of the current short-term rentals to exist. And added a buffer above it, so that's, that was a, a very strong sticking point in the lawsuits is you cannot take anyone's away.
So, um, for instance, talking numbers. If, if Rockaway did something similar where we said, okay, we're at twenty-one point six percent. What if we added one percent, we made it twenty-two point six, what would our cap be, uh, now it puts, puts it at four seventy-five. With that being said, I think I'm gonna turn it over to the governing body, uh, for discussion, uh.
This is, since I, I was the one that recommended a cap, let me talk a little bit about why I recommended the four fifty, and first let me say I have no interest in. Taking anything away, we very easily could have more than four fifty for a while and over time, um, they would, they would go away and we. Four fifty or lower and add, add uh, um, uh, additional STRs in to, to keep it at four fifty. Um, for me, it's really about how much tourist housing do we need? And how much tourism can our city afford? Before it starts to eat away at, uh, who we are as a community, why people come to visit us, why people live here. Um, and I looked at last year, um, and our, our Fourth of July crowds were unprecedented. Um, we got a nice email from the Wiener Dog folks and they talked about how huge the crowd was compared to previous years. Um, a- all of that puts, uh, uh, has an impact on our utilities, police, uh, fire. Um, city hall staff, um, we had an eighteen percent increase in calls to the sheriff's office. In twenty twenty-three over twenty twenty-two, another example of how the, the demand is, is impacting. Our abilities to support it, um, so. I think we've, we, we may not have hit the tipping point, but we're pretty close to where, where we're at the point where we've got to. Think about how much tourism can we support, now, we're always gonna get a lot of day trippers, people come in for the day. Um, that's a big part of our tourism, um, I'm really happy that Luke mentioned the hotels and motels. We have a lot of people that come here and they're hotel motel people. And that's a different kind of person that likes to stay in a hotel motel than, than a short-term rental, and then we have a whole bunch of people that come and stay in short-term rentals, so. Uh, in, in thinking about how much tourist housing do we need? I came to the conclusion, given what I saw last year and some of the data I've seen, four fifty. Made a good number to set at, um, and, and then we just, we let it. Come back down, we don't take them any way, and we have a nice thing in the ordinance which I really like, is about people who have building, is it building permits?
Yes, yep, uh, uh.
Don't want it.
A new, uh, under construction waiting list.
Yeah.
You've got a building permit, you're intense to have an STR, uh, you can sign up and it's an exception to the cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyways, that was my, my thinking.
That exception is just based on the time. Like, it's already in motion, once we put that cap with, a- after that cap is set, then that no longer. You can't just start developing a property and say.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a short.
And, and the, the hope is, uh, you, you've gotta get a building permit by March twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I really appreciate the work that our city planner did on this and I, but I've looked at coincides with the research that I did, because I. Either looked at and, and our top two people, all uh, city councilors and mayors all the way from. A story at a Lincoln City and every towns and gathered evidence and, and it's right on with what she says here. And, um, and, and we are the last city on the north coast. To look at right, uh, capping short-term rentals, all the rest of them have something. Some of them have a number cap like we have, some of them have percentage caps, some of them have this density caps. Well, they'll say only so many in this neighborhood or so many on their, the street. Now even just for comparison, I looked at Sisters, they just wanted something out of the area, they have a density cap. And don't allow but a certain number in a neighborhood. And, um, so we're the last one, and, and in a way, that kind of makes it. Easier for us, because we have models to look at, we can see what works, what doesn't work, you know, where are the pitfalls? And, uh, and just for a comparison with our four hundred and fifty, Cannon Beach on their website today says they only have two hundred and six. So we have double what Cannon Beach has, now Cannon Beach has all the hotels, you know, that's where most of their visitors are staying. But that, that's an interesting little tidbit. But one other thing that I, that I picked up from all of my research, and this is something I am definitely interested in, is that. Almost every city on the north coast. Classifies short-term rentals in different groups, like they'll have commercial, which would be Vicosa. And then they'll have like owner occupied or manager occupied and manager. Doesn't mean have to actually live there, but they have to live within a ten-mile radius, radius. And I was thinking, and I was really interested in that number, what was the number of people in Rockaway who own short-term rentals?
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen, I thought it was like six point nine or something. Oh, that's, that's, okay, yeah, so that would be like owner occupied or manager occupied.
Might be, but, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to get into that a little bit more, but anyway, so that's something I'm really interested in. If we have someone who's retired here and they bought a short-term rental as a second income to get them through retirement. Could we have another, like the other cities, could we have a classification that helps them keep that short-term rental and sustains their, their income? I'm, I'm just throwing that out as an idea, is to have these different classifications.
Wouldn't they be. Fettered in, would they be part of the licensing that we have right now, if they already have a. Uh, a short-term rental?
It, it's that's the way we word it.
Again, it's suggesting as we look at, and I wouldn't conflate it or confuse it or include it in this current ordinance. But I think it's a discussion that we should have in the future at a workshop. At our, because there are other things that we can consider, to, i- it's a twenty-plus million dollar business. We've got going on in the city and, and it, it, it screams out to be managed effectively. So that all of our stakeholders are considered, whether that's visitors, business owners, um, residents, part-time residents. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a big deal.
And, and one other quick thing, Cannon Beach has an, had an, has an ongoing, I don't know if it ended, it's still, they're still putting up reports. Um, called the Short-Term Rental Task Force and, and it's very much like our city planner did, except it's a little more extensive. And each, they do quarterly reports and they've been doing it over a period of four years and they're tracking. Every single detail about STRs and reporting back to the city council. And one of the, the gems I picked out of that is they served, this, one of their last ones, they surveyed the workforce and businesses. In Cannon Beach and they found that businesses need one thousand three hundred and some. Workers. But only seventy-five out of that one thousand three hundred actually live in Cannon Beach. So that means their workers are really priced out and their workers are having to drive from Pilma to Astoria to Cannon Beach to work and places like that. So that, I, I say that's a gem, because that's something we want to avoid, make sure we don't price out our workers.
Good stuff, thank you.
Does anybody else want to throw out a number?
I, I like the approach of, um. You know, we need to draw a line and sand, and the date, but then the one percent more. I just feel like that sort of fair gives people a little more time. Um, and, you know, four fifty is. We're already past that, so then that, that's my only concern, the numbers of. Potential for lawsuits and, and, you know, very unhappy.
Well, we're not gonna take them away from them. Um, I would like to throw the, I know. Um, I would like to throw another, an idea, and I don't know if this hat can go in the resolution or it has to be handled some other way. I, I, I would like to see an annual review of the cap.
That was, that was something I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Frequency, do we want to revisit this?
Well, I'll throw out one annual as a, as a starting point. I'm, I'm open to any. I just want some periodic review that we are charged to do.
Can we tie that, um, studies or whatnot? Would that fall to the planning commission or how, how?
The city plan, probably, yeah. Okay. Um, and, and so if anybody wants to look at Cannon Beach's task force and their reports they've been giving, it's actually right on their website. And so a person can look at that, but I, I agree. This can't be a one and done thing. If, if we decide to vote in this direction, it, it, it has to be something that is, uh, can be updated. I'll just say it that way. That constantly we're looking at and staying with what is needed.
I like that you have targeting eight, eight percent, whatever that is. Um, but, but of course translating that into a, a number, a cap, um, it, it'll give us a, a reference point year after year. Uh, how many homes were built? Uh, is there any room to, to keep that from something you're saying, but increase the license numbers? Um, okay.
Do you know how many building permits we've had this, we had lost them?
Last year? Mary, do you, do you have an idea?
I can tell you one moment. Thank you.
And, and, and just to restate what I said a moment ago, I really think it's about, it's not a percentage of, of dwelling units in the city. It's how much housing do we need to support tourism? That's really what it's about. That's why I like it's a cap. It's not a percentage.
And it takes into consideration resources.
To support all of the tourists that are coming into town.
Well, I, I, yeah, excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I think your idea of doing it every year is good because the economy changes. So we don't know what a year from now the economy is going to be like. We can guess and we can hope, but we don't know.
Kind of like unexpected snowstorms. And COVID.
Uh, while we're, while we're waiting, uh, for the planner here, uh, there's the second resolution in here where we, we, we set, uh, set a fee for uh, the two different waiting lists. And I'll take comments on that if anybody has any into that. The, uh, the number was something our office manager put together estimated. What those costs, I think it was, I think it was a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars. After eight and B.
And, and, uh, we have, she kind of looked at the, the underlying administrative cost to come up with the numbers. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, that, that's my, that's my understanding. I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any data on it. At, at this time.
I'll fully support a fee and if this is the fee that covers the overhead, then I think, I don't want us to be making money on them. Uh, but I do, I do want us to cover the costs.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the number is, uh, we'll, 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 we'll revisit that, make sure it's where, where it's supposed to be. Um, but it's, it's, it's interesting because, uh, you know, you don't know how long are you going to be tracking? Uh, a waiting list, some times that is going to be two years, uh, that you're, you're dealing with this individual application, updating contact information. Uh, we know there's a two year maximum for, then the construction list, um, uh, March twenty nine, two thousand twenty six. Those will fall down to the, the, the new, the new license waiting list. Uh, so there's a little bit of a, uh, pretty long timeframe. Yeah, it sounds like there, there is a, a consensus that we'll, we'll, uh, set a fee then.
I'm, I'm good with that.
So I have a point I'd like to raise and I have a potential conflict of interest, which means I can only speak as a citizen and I can't in a workshop.
No.
So I can't speak here. I have to wait for public testimony. That's, that's, is that for?
Uh, yeah, you can, you can abstain in, in, uh.
Okay.
Uh, and we won't, uh, uh, and, and it's not a, a, an agenda item. There's that resolution. Council meeting there tonight, but it, uh, it could be in February or it might be in, in, uh, in March. Depends how far, how, how quickly you move this along. Do you think, Mary?
Uh, we had twenty, we were single, they were on, constructed last year, well, in so for this year, two duplexes approved and two new.
Four. And the houses in the New Lake Lidl addition, is there a timeline that they might, uh, start construction? They just, they just have the, the permit approved. That's it.
Um, platform location. They still need to put a four P G or the city.
Okay, so only twenty and, and a duplex last year?
That new, that new development.
I'm shocked. I thought it was way more.
Are we ready to, are we good with, uh, any other comments on the subject? All right, let's, um, uh, move on to, uh, the Friends of the Library community going applications. We asked them to split their application into two and you have that, those two applications in, uh, your packet.
Wonderful questions and I, and I don't think, I don't, I couldn't tell if it was actually addressed when I read this. Is this flag post a, a, a safety issue for their building? Because you made it sound like it blew over or blow over something. Is, 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 uh, giving them this grant money going to alleviate a big, a major safety issue for them is one of the questions I have.
Uh, yeah, it, um, most likely I can tell you from our experience with the flag post, we had, we have one at the wayside right on the beach. We have one here. Um, they take an absolute beating. Uh, the ones we use are, uh, really big gauge, stainless steel. And, and even those, um, they have a finite lifetime. Um, it's a twenty four seven beating, um, that they take. So, uh, if you're going to get a flag pole here on the coast, you need to get a commercial grade flag pole or it's not going to last very long and it will come down. Um, there's, there's, and I think, I think she talks about, uh, the, the footing or foundation needed for those.
Yeah.
And some.
She was very thorough with the.
Yeah. She explained some of the.
I feel like I can almost.
Cause you're driving yourself.
Yeah.
And, and then, um, that's, well, that's on that grant. And then if I read the second grant, uh, application correctly, uh, they're asked, I didn't get this last month when it was submitted, but this time it, it makes it sound like they're just wanting to finish a project they already started. Like, uh, we awarded them nine hundred and fifty dollars at last year for mailings. And it's turned out to be a lot more than that.
It was nine fifty for the flag pole.
Oh, nine fifty.
For the flag pole. And so they're asking for the difference between.
So, so the it's either, um, bulk mailing status or they have to actually use a bulk mailing and then they have a flat, a, a one time fee. They have to keep it active. That's sort of the whole thing, yes.
I think I favor the flag pole. It feels like the county should do the.
I'm, I'm sorry, cause somebody.
I think if I, I, I feel like I would rather do, I would pick one. And I think I favor the flag pole. I feel like the county should do the mailing part for them.
I do too.
Because the, the Friends of the Library are responsible for the library itself and the, the improvements to the property and all of that. So we're helping the volunteers do their flag pole, but I feel as though the county should have some administrative responsibility to support the library and, and they must have a bulk permit, right? I mean.
Except they're two separate organizations. The county, the county is a government body.
Right.
And the Friends of the Library is a, as a private nonprofit.
Right. I get that. I understand that. Yeah. I feel like the county should duck out too.
Oh, I feel like the county should totally pay for everything with the library, but.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I, I'm not a voting member of the, I will say, I, 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 I can support myself as mayor.
We've done a few things.
Both requests for, it's a great organization. They do.
Built for years.
Yeah.
And it's put a lot of money into that. We stopped thinking about it. Did bottom a new roof, carpeting, we done the inside, we done the porch.
A whole string, yeah.
So what happens with the funds, uh, that we've allocated for these grants if it's not done?
Oh, I'm not saying not to give it to them.
But I'm, I'm asking, just curious.
Um, if, if we don't award all the funds that, that we would have budgeted, it'll roll over for next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
As, but not considering this grant, which if it's approved.
The budget committee decides to do so.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Uh, so right now, not considering this grant, we have twenty nine thousand two hundred and thirty two doll, more dollars to give away. That's a lot of money.
I know a couple of other nonprofits that are going to submit because we, we, we decided to leave it up.
Yeah.
That, that was going to be my next question. Like, when is the last deadline? That someone can submit an application and it's still be under this budget year?
March, uh, March fifth is what we're looking at. And then, uh, at the March, March thirteenth council meeting, uh, you'll have the final awards.
Yeah.
For the community grant.
Anyways, again, I think, I think I would encourage the council to support both grants for the Friends of the Library. The library is a tremendous asset and that's, and Councilor McGinnis said, they operate different than the county. I don't think we can expect the county. I'd be shocked if the county would step up the hell, whether we'd like them to do or not.
There's lots of other beneficial aspects to.
Their assets to visitors, they're an asset to residents, to part time residents. So.
And just trying to get more visibility.
You take a consensus on which one.
Yeah, obviously I, I don't, I don't know that we have a consensus either way.
We can figure that out. I'd like to keep it on there.
Okay.
Yeah, just grant. Present both of them.
Uh, I'm, I'm not saying that she shouldn't get the grant. I'm just pointing out that we, we built the building.
Yeah.
Uh, with grants.
I agree.
So, so what we can do is, um, uh, draft that resolution with bulk on there and, and, um, you can amend that as a, as a body down there and, um, cause I don't, it doesn't sound like we're going to get a, a clear consensus up, up here.
Okay.
All right. Very nice.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about zoom bombing?
Sure, sure. Um, you, you want to take the lead and then I'll probably, I have my, what I'm going to do if it happens to us.
Okay, so, uh, uh, some cities have, have, uh, been experiencing, uh, zoom, where they're going zoom bombing, basically. People sign up to speak, whether it's a public hearing or as in, as in a, a, a comment on an agenda item, what have you. And, uh, anyone's turn, they say, uh, include vulgar, uh, hateful things. And, uh, there are some processes we can put in place that might help to some degree, but we don't have those right now. And, and so in consultation with the mayor, um, we've, uh, well, decided to put, uh, First Amendment rights, uh, on top. And so, uh, basically, uh, if it happens, we're going to let, give them the time they're allotted. Anyone else person, that's, that's.
We can't hear them.
That's what I was going to say. There's a few.
But we will, I will ask our, our city recorder that, that when they get to four minutes or the three minutes, they're done.
They'll be done.
There'll be, there'll be, there'll be, they will be shut, shut off. Yeah.
Literally, no one has a right to speak on, uh, unless it's a public hearing or a passage of an, an ordinance. But legally, no one has a right to speak. So if someone goes to non-agenda time and starts zoom bombing us, that would be our generosity to let it continue because they don't have that legal right.
No, but we just have to be careful. If, if others are given the, the, the opportunity, uh, then, 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 then we're making a decision on, on what speech is allowed. Um, there are, there are, there are, like I said, there are tools uh, that we can use. We just don't have time right now to, to put them in place and, and discuss them at, at any length. Hopefully nothing will happen, but we just want you to beware if it does. Um, that's, that's the plan at this point.
You and the mayor are on top of it. It's what you're saying, yeah?
Well, as.
Can be, yeah.
Okay, in some meetings you can see the participants, like their faces or their screen or whatever. As a council person, I would really like that. If I could see, I'd like to see the citizens that are participating and, and meeting with us if, if we could fix that to happen. I, um, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I've been to a couple of, uh, regional League of Municipal Cities meetings. The one in St. Helens was one where they were able to show us who was zooming in.
Okay.
And that might shorten some of that zen bombing.
If it's, yeah, it's not anonymous.
Well, you can also show images as well.
Yeah, yeah. And they've done that and they showed images that are not, uh.
I'm.
Yeah.
So that, this way only our city recorder has to look at.
So if we have to turn it, if we know.
Okay, thank you for, for listening to that. Is there any other, uh, workshop business?
Saying, uh, as always, Ben, I'm impressed with, uh, materials that our staff presents to us to help us make our decisions. It's, it's so helpful.
Right, um, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting? Second, it's moved and seconded. Uh, let's record the vote. Uh, Council President Chief. Counselor Franken. Counselor Hayes. Counselor Martine. Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Uh, we are adjourned at, um, said, five thirty seven on Wednesday, January tenth, twenty twenty four.